No. Hit your button.
Good evening, welcome to the City of West Miami. Today is Wednesday, November 16th, 2016. City Commission meeting at 7:40. 7:30. For the invocation, Mrs. Aguilar.
Thank you and please rise. Let's bow our heads this evening and pray to our Father in Heaven, Creator of all and source of all goodness and love, to please look kindly upon us and receive our heartfelt gratitude in this time of giving thanks. Thank you for all the graces and all the blessings you have bestowed upon us, spiritual and temporal, our faith and our religious heritage, our food and shelter, our health, the loves we have for one another, our family and friends. Dear Father in your infinite generosity, please grant us the continued graces and blessings throughout the coming year and during this Thanksgiving holiday. We pray so that those that are lonely, ill and frail will find comfort. We pray for our Mayor Eduardo Muñoz and for his speedy recovery. Please keep our law enforcement officers, firefighters and military personnel safe. In this we ask you, Lord, our Lord, amen.
For the place of allegiance, chief.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Mayor Eduardo Muñoz is excused this evening. Vice Mayor Candida Blanca is presiding.
Yes.
Commissioner Juan Blanes.
Present.
Commissioner Ronda Rodriguez.
Present.
Commissioner Luciano Suárez.
Yes.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Next item?
Item four, presentation of minutes for approval for November 2nd, 2016, regular City Commission meeting.
Motion?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Next item?
Item five, report of the City Manager.
No written report this evening.
Next item?
Item six, report of the City Attorney.
Excuse me, may I, Mr. Yalov?
You've got 30 seconds.
We had a long meeting with George Leifman today about the red light cameras. And the manager will report in the future. There's multiple lawyers that participated in that almost two hours hearing. And subsequent there, too, we had another meeting, telephone conference with the chief and the attorneys for one of the defendants. In essence, we will report in the future about the progress. But it seems that it will be a little bit longer than we had anticipated. But we will report on that.
Thank you. Next item?
Item seven, report of the City Engineer.
No report.
Item eight, committee reports.
No.
Item nine, citizens' presentations.
No.
No presentations. Item 10, unfinished business, none this evening. Item 11, under new business agenda items, this is item 11A, public hearing. This is a second reading, an ordinance of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami, Florida, amending Chapter 5 of the West Miami Code, titled Building. Article 1, Section 5.5, titled Schedule of Permit Fees, establishing a permit fee in addition to any fee now required and authorized by the City of West Miami for any new building or addition to an existing structure within the City of West Miami to comply with Section 8-12, titled Fees of Miami-Dade County Code, authorizing the City Manager to remit the amounts of said fees to Miami-Dade County Finance Department, providing for penalties, repeal of all conflicting ordinances, correction of scrutiny errors, providing for severability, providing for codification and providing for an effective date, Mayor and City Commission. And this public hearing was advertised on a newspaper of general circulation on November 3rd, 2016. This is a public hearing.
If I may, Madam Mayor, just to give you a brief history on this item is about a year ago, we had, we were responsible for paying Miami-Dade County under the county code, under the section recited by the clerk. It is a fee for anyone with new construction projects or additions, structural additions to a property. They are required to pay a fee to the county. Because and since the transition of our building department functions, we are responsible of collecting this fee from anyone or any applicant that comes in for a building permit and pay the county, under their county code, the stipulated amount, which I believe it's 60 cents for every square feet of $1,000 value, I'm sorry, for any construction. So that, we're basically becoming a pass-through collection agency for the county. This fee does not accept, does not affect your residents, only those that seek a building permit. And this applies to commercial developments and residential projects as well.
I have a question, Madam Mayor, the manager. This is the fee that in the beginning, we missed.
Correct, and we were billed for that.
And then now we realize that we have to do it.
We have to collect it on behalf of the county and remit the money to the county.
And send to the county.
Correct.
Well, I think if we have to do that, this is normal and it's a regular procedure in all the cities and all these departments. So I make a motion for approval of this.
I have one question first, if I may, Commissioner.
Do it.
And this may be Mr. Penna. Mr. Penna, as far as the county is concerned, have we checked and double-checked and triple-checked and quadruple-checked that this is the only fee that we're missing?
Yes, that we know of.
Positive, we're not, there's nothing else we need to collect?
No, everything else that is collected under a building permit goes directly to the county when they get their review process for fire or DERM.
Okay.
At that time, they collect school board, water impact, every other impact fee they collect. This is not actually for the building permit. This is for the maintenance of the code.
Perfect, I just want to avoid, here from now, they come knocking on our door and saying,
Correct.
We forgot a fee. Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, prior to getting a second, you have to open it for the public hearing.
I open the public. I close it.
Motion?
Second.
On the motion, Commissioner Rodriguez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanes?
Yes.
Commissioner Suárez?
Yes.
Mayor Blanca?
Yes.
4-0, item passed.
Next item, please.
Item 11B, this is a public hearing, a second reading, an ordinance of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami, Florida, relating to dispensing cannabis facilities, adopting findings of fact, providing definitions, imposing a temporary moratorium of 180 days for the effective date of this ordinance on the opening of any cannabis dispensing facility, directing the planning official to recommend land development regulations for cannabis dispensing facilities by a date certain, providing for penalties, repeal of conflict, conflicting ordinances, correction of scrutiny errors, provide for severability, provide for codification and providing for effective date, Mayor and City Commission. And this public hearing was advertised on a newspaper of general circulation on November 3rd, 2016. This is a public hearing.
Madam Mayor, basically, this will extend 180 days for us to be able to study the feasibility of the zoning places where the facilities may or may not be installed. In addition, the voters voted on amendment, on amendment two, on the same regulations. So we have to have that time of 180 days to see how the amendment that was recently approved by the voters of the state of Florida fits into the spectrum of our municipality.
Thank you.
Mr. Attorney, is that sufficient time to do what needs to be done?
Yes, as a matter of fact, Mr. Penna is already working on that issue.
Is that 180 days sufficient time for you to do the, whatever study you need to have done?
Yes, through the metropolitan planning organizations that were developing an ordinance for county wide.
So that's enough time?
Yes.
And Mr. Attorney, whatever you have to do, that's enough time for you as well?
Yes.
Any motion?
I have a question.
Yes.
Madam Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
I have a question to the clerk. I have, I didn't see, I said Charlie. The definition about off-street parking requirement?
Yes, we are on item 11B. Cannabis.
Oh, because I have the end of page.
Do I hear any motion?
You have to open to the public hearing, man.
I open it and I close it.
For this item?
Do you have anyone who's registered to speak on the item?
No.
Okay, I'll do it again. I open it to the public, do we have anybody?
No.
I close it.
Motion?
Second.
On the motion, Commissioner Suárez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanes?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mayor Blanca?
Yes.
4-0, item passed.
Next item?
Item 11C, this is a public hearing, a second reading, an ordinance of the City of West Miami, Florida, amending Section 1, Definitions, and Section 5, Off-Street Parking Requirements of zoning ordinance 282, as amended by ordinance numbers 2005-02 and 2013-01, providing for severability, providing for codification and providing for an effective date, Mayor and City Commission. And this is a public hearing that was advertised on November 3rd, 2016, a newspaper of general circulation.
I open to the public. I close it. Any comment?
Yeah, I want to listen, Mr. Penna, may you?
Mr. Commissioner, this is an ordinance that was heard before the Planning and Zoning Board for several months until we actually came to an agreement on the existing ordinance. Now, it's shown on the, on your package tonight. It basically allows for any development in the, in the commercial area that is in need of additional parking to go up to at least 45% of parking with mechanical lifts, as long as they provide a full-time valet service. In other words, this is a parking equipment that is put in parking garages where they're not visible from the street. And then they are allowed to park two cars in one space. But it's only operated through the purpose with the service of a valet. Again, we discussed it at length with the zoning board for almost three months until we came up with this final version of the ordinance, which they approved. And it's here before you tonight for approval.
I have a question, Mayor. This is the project, that building, 67th Avenue, with that system of garage that is an elevator and one car goes on top of the other, mechanical things?
There's a project that requests this type of mechanical garage, yes, equipment.
Mayor, I tell you one thing. I request this be continued because we should have a full commission and the mayor, who is an architect, present for this final discussion. That's my, my motion to continue this until the full commission is and the architect mayor is present. Because this is a very, very mechanical parking lot. It's a very difficult thing to operate, a very specific. And I recommend, in my mind, to wait for the full commission. And our mayor is an architect. He will know better than us. Any comment? And that's my proposal. And my, my, my
As your recommendation.
Continue this until the full commission is and the mayor, I repeat, who is an architect, be present and clarify this. Because in my mind, we should know, these developers should tell us where this new system is working. And I recommend all of us go there and see how it works. See, because this is something completely new. And then I recommend to continue this until the mayor's here. And we clarify the situation.
Okay.
That's my motion.
I agree with Commissioner Suárez.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Mr. Penna, the planning and zoning you said took several months.
Yes.
Did they have?
Excuse me, please. Excuse me. Mr. Penna?
Did, what were their major concerns? Or tell me about their concerns.
Again, the mechanical noise from the operation of the lift and the visuality into the parking garage.
So there's no visual, you can't see it from the outside?
No.
And what was the determination on the noise?
The building have sufficient buffering. And the doors to opening the garage were actually, I don't know if you've seen the ones on 21st, they're actually open, they're not closed. These would be completely solid doors.
And I understand that they recommended with the fact that there'll be a 24-hour valet.
That's correct.
Meaning, now, how will we, or will we have to not monitor that? But how will we know that that indeed is the case? That they will have a 24-hour valet?
That would be a condition of any approval.
Would that be like a code compliance thing?
Correct.
That we would monitor that periodically?
Correct.
Okay. Because my concern would be like if, what happens if it breaks down and this resident can't get their car out? Are we liable for any? If we approve a special use permit, would we be liable for the fact that this resident cannot get their car out in the time that they think is deemed?
Again, that's not
Necessary.
Part of this ordinance at this point.
Okay.
Okay.
Question for the attorney. Mr. Attorney, can you elaborate on the, on what was just brought up by Citizen Aspel?
In order to uphold, in order to uphold, I'm sorry, to reject the recommendation of the zoning board, you need four-fifth vote. So four-fifths means four out of five.
We should wait for the mayor.
You need the mayor present.
I agree with the Commissioner Suárez.
So I understand the delay. However, in practical purposes, it would be better to err in the side of caution. So I think that the motion is well taken.
To postpone.
We should defer until next meeting.
Not defer. If I may interject. Continue the public hearing so that avoids the cost of re-advertising. And I would continue it till the second meeting of January 2017. I don't know if the applicant I'm sorry, January 18th of 2017. And I don't know whether the applicant would agree to that.
That will still be, that's on the next item.
Okay. And that, that would be a continuation of the public hearing so that we don't have to advertise again.
Okay.
And again, I read from Section 3.06, Procedure in Meetings and Boarding Quarts and Exceptions. Any matter placed on the agenda of a meeting and at the meeting and not included in the pre-published agenda of the meeting must be passed a formally vote of three members of the council. An affirmative vote of four-fifths, four-fifths of the city council shall be required to the following instances: to issue borrow bonds, to grant a review franchises, to sell property, to reverse the Planning and Zoning Board.
So you need a four-fifths vote to reverse the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Board?
So we should continue this for the next meeting?
Again, if you continue this, you continue the item is alive until you hear it again and you have five members present.
Motion?
Yes, we have a, we have a motion by Commissioner Suárez. We have a second to continue this public hearing until the date of January 18th, 2017, at 7:30 PM. We have a motion, we have a second. And the motion to continue, Commissioner Rodriguez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Suárez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanes?
Yes.
Mayor Blanca?
Yes.
So this item is continuing.
Next item, please.
Next item is item 11D. This is a public hearing that has been continued from May 18, 2016, August 17, 2016, October 19, 2016. The applicant, 1515 Real Estate Holdings, Inc. Applicant requests a special use permit for planned development for the property at 1515 Southwest 67th Avenue, West Miami, Florida, 33155. The property at 1515 Southwest 67th Avenue totals 120 feet wide by 120 feet long in the C Street. The local, the total acreage for the C parcel is 0.27 acres. The parcel of land is within the mixed-use corridor. The applicant is requesting to build eight stories building on the parcel with one level of underground parking. The building consists of 28 residential units and a total square footage of 44,762.
Again, this is relying upon the previous ordinance that got continued. So you need to continue this one also. You could open the public hearing and then continue to
I open it to the public?
Yes. And now close it and continue it to
I close it and continue.
To January 18th, 2017.
Thank you, Mr. Penna.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Next item, please.
Okay, so this public hearing is continued until January 18th, 2017, at 7:30. Are all in favor?
Aye.
This public hearing is continued. Item 11E is related to item D, which is the application, and is continued until January 18, 2017. Next item would be item 11F. This is a request for approval of additional fees in connection with the redesign and modifications made to Southwest 62nd Avenue Road pursuant to suggestions and modifications made by Miami-Dade County Public Works and delays associated with the permits and construction phase. But this is by City Manager, T. Y. Lynn International.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Commission. Before I yield to Mr. Penna, this request for additional work involved is, goes hand in hand with the LAP grant that the city received from the Florida Department of Transportation. If you will allow Mr. Penna to elaborate on what occurred, what the delay was and why we are looking at additional services.
Mr. Penna?
On the previous resolution that got approved for their services, it was an hourly project. In other words, whatever hours were spent on it is what got billed against the project. This is for additional time spent on the project because of the redesign that we had to go through several phases with Miami-Dade County on 62nd Avenue, the actual traffic circle that we have in front of our City Hall now, or Traffic Calmer, that we have in front of City Hall. It went over in meetings with the county and in redesign work that had to be redone in order to meet the county's criteria of how they wanted it done.
Redone?
Yes.
In our city?
Yes, county road, 62nd Avenue is a county road.
Yeah, was this, this, Mayor, this was because the delay that we have with the county, right?
That's correct.
Madam Mayor, I have a question.
Sure.
Mr. Penna, did the original contract with the engineers take the overruns into consideration? Was that, was that part of the original contract?
No, the original contract was, number one, it was overall for the eight traffic circles that was being built at the time by the SRTAX and the PT and the LAP agreement. And then this last one, which we left for last because it was the most complicated one with the county, that's the one that kept going back and forth with redesign work.
So none of the contracts discussed overrun?
No. It's on an hourly basis when we do those contracts. It depends, if they don't have the engineers working on it, we don't get built for it.
I guess my question is coming because this, this project was completed, how long ago?
It was actually supposed to complete, I believe was
2015.
No, no, the, the total work was supposed to be completed in early this year. And we actually ended up finishing it in June.
So the median on 62nd was done in June?
No, no, the work was actually done late last year.
But isn't this charge related to the, specifically to the median on 62nd?
The additional, yes, yes.
So, and that was, when did we finally finish that median?
The median was completed in August of last year.
So I guess my question is, is this customary that it takes this long to be notified of additional cost?
Usually, because again, we weren't finished with the paperwork part of the LAP agreement. It also requires submissions to the state. The state has to submit it to the federal government. It comes back. Until that's not all complete, they don't finish their work.
Okay.
And by the way, to add to that, the reimbursement from FDOT came about two weeks ago.
About two weeks ago.
So that gives you an idea of the, of how long it takes to close these projects out. That part, I can tell you, we got the final reimbursement and we were able to close out the project. Now, these additional fees, if you decide to approve it, comes from the half-cent penny tax because the actual grant has been closed. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yes.
And it was closed within budget.
Just one more. And were we notified all along the way that these additional fees were being incurred? Like, I should say, you know, after the engineer who ever realized they were running over, were we like notified?
Again, it's, no, we're not notified because it's on, it's on an hourly basis. It's work that sometimes we don't even have control of because it's stuff that needs to meet state and federal mandates. So it's other work that they have to do.
And county, because the county had to sign off on the, on the redesign. And basically, what T. Y. Lynn did is they gave us a price for the work that they thought would be approved from the get-go.
Right.
What the complications were along the way is we, they had to redesign and reconfigure the front on 62nd Avenue[1643.74] the front on 62nd Avenue to accommodate the county, the state, and obviously FDOT, which is the funding agency. And that took several months.
Correct. The initial, the initial designs had pavers, it had more parking spaces up front. We had to eliminate parking because of distances that are required and because of their requirement at state and federal.
Okay.
No, I, Mayor, normally the county and the state complicate many, many jobs this time.
All the time.
I make, I make approval of this because we have to do it.
That's on the next one.
Yes, next item.
Next item.
Item 11G, Resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami authorizing the City Manager to pay the sum of $15,400 for additional work in connection with the redesign and construction of Southwest 62nd Avenue Medium to adapt to the Miami-Dade County standards, which exceeded the original scope and timeline schedule, providing for payment of these services to the fund, to be funded from the PTP half-cent penny tax proceeds for fiscal year ended September 30th, 2016, from its unrestricted and undesigned reserve balance, providing for an effective date, Mayor and City Commission.
Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Yes, on the motion. Commissioner Rodriguez, as you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanes?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Mayor Blanca?
Yes.
4-0, item passed.
Next item, please.
Item H, bid tabulation reported by the Office of the City Clerk in reference to Garden Club, Club Park Expansion Project. And on November 3rd, 2016 at 2:00 PM, the, the bid for the Garden Club Park Expansion was open, publicly opened at City Hall, and the following bid proposals were received. From Florida Construction and Engineering, bid price $302,344.86. From GEC Associates, $468,905. And from HG Construction Development and Investment, $285,474.27. That concludes my report.
Madam Mayor.
If I may add to this, to this report issued by the City Clerk, the city has a CDBG grant from Miami-Dade County, which we have requested an extension to complete the project because the first bids were received, they were extremely high. So basically, what T Y Lin did was repackaged the bid and broke it down so that we could do the project in phases, because if you will recall, the initial bids came in for about $600,000. That said, the $125,000, in addition to our match, which, which was $175,000 from park impact fees, will allow the infrastructure for the park to be completed under this bid, should you decide to award it this evening. In addition to that, all park equipment, the restroom renovation, and the park benches would fall under a FEDAP application, which Mr. Ruano submitted on behalf of the city, in the amount of $100,000, which has been matched by an additional $100,000 of park impact fees. So at the end of the day, is the project gonna cost about $600? The answer is yes, but we are using different pots of monies to accompany these grants to try to maximize the subsidy for the project.
Thank you. Any comment?
I, I do, Madam Mayor, just, Madam Manager, it sounds like it's gonna be substantially more than we originally planned on.
A lot more, no question about it, yes.
And if you would just help me understand, I know you explained it, but let me understand why this is?
Our original, our original budget was, for the park was $300,000 to do everything that we wanted to do.
The entire project?
Correct.
Infrastructure, playgrounds?
Playground, everything together.
And if I may interject, that was shortly after we acquired the property.
Correct.
Obviously, construction costs have escalated because in a booming economy, that is our reality.
Of course.
Exactly. And when we went out to bid on the first phase, on the first package, bids came back at $600,000.
I remember, yes.
We then had to go back to the, the, the actual specifications and take out all the equipment that was part of the original bid in order to bring it within the $300,000 budget. At that time, we were actually funding it, or, at one point, we were gonna fund it ourselves, and then we had the, the $125,000 CDBG actually revisited by the County Commission and awarded to the city.
So this is obviously the better way to go?
Yes.
Absolutely, because you are actually creating a pot of money of $125,000 from CDBG that you don't have to use from impact fees. And if we are successfully awarded the $100,000, which is your job to lobby your, your representatives in Tallahassee, then we have another $100,000, which minimizes the amount of money that's gonna come out of impact fees.
Which, that means $225,000 came from grants out of the $600,000 that's gonna cost to finish the park.
Exactly. And that's $225,000 more than you, than you get to keep in park impact fees that could be used towards future park projects. And this does not include any, the replacement of the playground equipment that has all been encumbered, budgeted, and as you know, that's being done in phases now.
No, but we're just talking about the Garden Club right now?
Correct.
Okay.
Any motion?
We need to read the item, the resolution.
Mayor, I'd like to ask a question, Mr. Alonso. Mr. Alonso, you represent the T Y Lin, you're a very famous and very serious company. No, you know that, we know that. This is the best deal that you founded, right?
Absolutely, I think the, the bid price is well aligned.
And you check all this company and you check the works they do, I was reading the papers and...
Yeah, we're familiar with the company, and we've also, we've checked their references and the reputable company.
And this is your highly recommendation of these people?
Yes.
All right.
Will you read the resolution, please?
I'm making a motion.
Item 11, 11I, Resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami authorizing the City Manager to enter into an agreement with HG Construction Development and Investment, Inc., for an amount of $285,474.27 for the purpose of accomplishing the Garden Club Park Expansion Project, providing for funding from CDBG grant and park impact fees, providing for effective date, Mayor and City Commission.
Do I hear any motion?
Motion.
Second.
Yes, Commissioner Blanes, as you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Mayor Blanca?
Yes.
4-0, item passed.
Next item, please.
And, Mayor, let me make a comment for the residents, and this is one of the things where the development that we have in the city is not only that this development bring new residents and new revenue, also this, this impact fees that these developments pay help us with the parks and some areas that we need. So this is something that indirectly benefits the city very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next item, please.
Item 11J, Request for mitigation of property located at 71075 Southwest 64th Avenue, West Miami, and owner, Madeline Cabrera. This is mitigation of liens for court violations.
Mr. Pena.
This was a property that was cited for some pavement material that they put in the rear yard, which is not allowed in residential areas.
I'm sorry, some what equip, what did you say?
Lime rock.
Oh, okay.
That was put in the backyard instead of sod, and it took a while to get them to get it back out and cover it back up with grass. And in that process, there was a lien placed on the property. The, the property owner's here tonight to mitigate that fine.
How much is the fine?
The total amount is $9,816.
And $6.
Sixty or six?
Oh, I have $9,816.
No, but we, we recalculated and we came up with the, with this amount.
Are they getting today?
Yes.
Please come over.
Sure.
You spent how long? Did it take to have the problem cleared?
Approximately seven months.
Please come and say, you name my address, please.
Yes, good evening. The address is 1075 Southwest 64th Avenue, Madeline Cabrera. Okay, I have, I'm the owner of the property, I have it rented, and the tenant is here with me. And when I have received mail from the, from the city, I've obviously called him up and let him know that we're, we have a problem going on and that he needs to make sure to correct it. And I do remember the, the letter and calling him up and letting him know that he needed to remove, I didn't even know what he had done in the back. And he said he had put, because no grass was growing, he decided to put some gravel or stuff.
Lime rock.
And I asked him to make sure that he, we had certain amount of time to correct the, the problem. So that was that. He let me know that he had corrected it, and I forgot all about that. And now, I'm just telling you as I know it, and now I'm checking the property because I'm thinking of refinancing it, and I see I have a lien in the property. So I called to find out what, what the lien was all about. It was West Miami. That's how I found out, that apparently had gone, you know, I don't know how many months, seven months, I heard, without being corrected. So obviously, I called him immediately, and he told me, no, that's not, that's not how it happened. And then he had his story to say that he had contacted the Charlie, I believe he's retired now, the inspector, and he had gone by and explained to him what he needed to have done. He got the grass, he put it all the way to where the fence was. The description was that he had, that he needed to correct the problem with the limestone in the back of the property, on the backyard of the property. So he apparently just, they went to the fence and covered everything with grass as they were asked. And then I guess he, he called, he doesn't speak English, I need to ask him in Spanish, if you don't mind, so he can tell me. En momento, puede venir acá un momentito, por favor? Osmeles is his name?
Your name, please?
Su nombre, puede decir, nombre y apellido.
Osmele Chiverria.
La dirección.
1075 Southwest 64th Avenue.
1075 Southwest 64th Avenue.
Le estoy informando, le estoy diciendo a ellos de cuando recibimos la nota que lo llamé para decirle que había algo que tenemos que corregir, un problema y que ustedes me dijeron que iban a encargarse de eso, y era Charlie, la persona encargada, el inspector Charlie, no?
I'm, I'm explaining to my tenant that what, what was done in terms of what, what I did when I received the notice that something had been done at the property, I dealt with Mr. Charlie McDermott, who is now retired, and...
Okay, entonces qué fue lo que te habló con Charlie?
Charlie nos dio tres meses para corregir el problema.
Mr. McDermott gave us three months to correct the violation. We removed the concrete layer from the backyard.
Se sembró la hierba, entonces no me alcanzó la hierba, compré dos palas y me faltaron como cinco metros.
I purchased about two pallets of grass. I fell short by five meters, and we actually sawed the yard.
Yo personalmente hablé con señor Juan.
I personally spoke to Juan, Pena. And I was left with a notification from the city that the grass, that I needed to plant additional grass so that it would go up to the property line.
To the sidewalk.
To the sidewalk, which is the property line. Since I had run out of the pallet sod, I went ahead and bought seeds, grass seeds, and I planted that. And the grass has taken longer to come back because obviously, it was not actual grass, it was the seeds that was used. And it's taken longer than expected.
Thank you.
Ms. Cabrera, if you could just clarify for me, were we, we're talking about the backyard or the front yard? Because you said backyard, and then the tenant said, oh, so it's...
The corner house.
The sidewalk in the back. Got you, thank you.
Any comment?
I wanna thank Ms. Cabrera, first of all, you were pretty much one of the first residents I've said, I've heard come up here and say you actually responded to our notices right away, thank you. A lot of residents don't respond to our notices, so I appreciate the fact that you got the notice and you called, and it was going to your address. So I appreciate that, that you responded to the notices that we sent you.
I try, I know, I know what it means if I don't, so I make sure that I take care of whatever problem.
How much is the fine?
The total fine with the penalties is $9,816. That includes your penalties, recording fees, and the cost for the release of the lien. The actual lien was placed for an amount of $8,300.
Thank you.
Ms. Cabrera, I just wanna, for future reference, you are the property owner.
Yes, I am.
And it is your responsibility. So you, you don't live here, you rent.
No.
Okay, so whoever you rent to, you have to make sure that they abide by our laws and our regulations, because if they don't do that, they cause a detriment to the quality of life of the rest of the residents. You know, it doesn't bother you because you don't live here?
No, no, it does.
Okay, so for future reference, you're gonna need to get more involved with your tenants to make sure that they do the right thing. Do you understand?
No, I do understand. And I, and I appreciate the fact of how you're trying to, or you're keeping the, the city. Because obviously, I have the property here, I want it to go up in value, and that is the way we keep the value of the property, the way we want it. And there are certain things that we're not aware of, but I already told him not to do anything in the house unless he comes and finds out if he can do it or not. Even put a, a storage little place that he at one point put without, I didn't even know it was there. And then I got a notice, he removed it immediately. And anything that we are told, like something about a bird or something, he had an acage in the back, they called me up, it was, again, Inspector, I don't know his last name, Charlie.
Charlie McDermott.
And, and I called, and he said, I took care of it, have him come by, and he'll see that I already took care of it. But I won't find out about certain things unless the inspector or the city sends me a letter. And I never got a letter to come in front of you, otherwise I would have corrected the problem maybe because it would cost me money or come here.
Well, that's good advice that you gave him to come and, and see us before he does anything. And we have a brand-new Public Works building that he's, welcome to come anytime he has a question.
There are not people that have been here for a very long time, so they don't know a lot of, of rules and regulations, so I'm sure...
Just come and ask.
It's coming out.
Visit the website as well?
As well.
I haven't informed them already.
More than welcome to be back there whenever you like. Madam Manager, what is the call? How much did we spend on this file?
Well, in keeping, in keeping, and again, I go back to my statement that I always make, each and every case should be weighed of its, on its own merits. I have conferred with Mr. Pena, and we believe that a 15% mitigation should be afforded to this property owner. That would bring the amount to $1,005...
$472.47.
Does that cover the penalty and recording fees and release of lien?
The release of lien is separate and apart. The release of lien fee is, is apart, it's $12.
Okay, so then it needs to be included in that, whatever it is.
Exactly. So if you wanna round it off, my recommendation would be $1,500 to take care of all the administrative expenses, the release of lien.
Well, it says your penalty and recording fees, $1,504 plus 12.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
So if you're gonna round off, you should round off.
The clerk just gave me an amount, the 15% of $1,472. That's why I rounded it off. On the $8,300. Okay, then I stand corrected.
What you're looking at is the penalties and recording fees on the $8,300 that's presently there now.
Okay.
Exactly.
When you, when you add all that up, it's the $9,005 that the clerk gave you.
I realize that. I just wanna make sure that we're totally covered.
Right. And the release of lien fee is a separate fee, and that's standard, that's payable to the, to the city because we have to pay that much to the clerk of the court to get that lien released.
Yes, I'm looking at the grand total of $9,816. Is that not...
That is correct. That includes everything. Release of lien, the actual amount that was leaned for the violation, the interest, and the penalties accrued.
Yes, okay.
So I would say $1,500, plus the $12 recording fee.
No, actually, it's 15, the 15% of 900, it includes already the $12, so...
So 1,500, that's what I had initially stated, because we were taking the violation and the 15% on the violation, but then you have the interest, the penalties, and the recording fees.
Is there motion on the table?
Second.
Okay, the motion was made by Commissioner Blanes?
Yes.
And second by... I'm sorry, we need to... And we can agree the resolution for the record.
Okay.
Item 11K, Resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami authorizing the City Manager to accept a mitigation offer in the amount of $1,500 from Madeline Cabrera on court enforcement lien for court violations of the property located at 1075 Southwest 64th Avenue, West Miami, Florida, providing that if payment in full is not paid by, how much time do you allow? 90 days?
I would say 30 days.
30 days.
Pay in 30 days, then the amount owed shall revert to the original amount, providing for effective date, Mayor and City Commission. Motion by Commissioner Blanes, second by Commissioner Rodriguez. And on the motion, Commissioner Suarez, as you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanes?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mayor Blanca?
Yes.
4-0, item passed.
Thank you so much for your time.
You understand this, Ms. Cabrera, that if within 30 days you don't pay it, it reverts back to...
No, no, we'll pay, what, can I pay today? Would be tomorrow during office hours or is it today?
Tomorrow during business hours.
Okay, no, no, I would pay it immediately.
So we can give you a receipt and...
Exactly. How, how soon is the lien released from the property?
We could, if you pay tomorrow before 2 o'clock, we could send it off tomorrow electronically.
Take like a day or two.
So a day or two, to get the release.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much.
Next item, please.
Item 11L, Resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami authorizing the City Manager to execute an inter-local agreement between the City of West Miami and the Office of the State Attorney for the Prosecution of Ordinance Violations for the period October 1st, 2016 through September 30th, 2017, providing for effective date, providing for transmittal, Mayor and City Commission.
Madam Mayor, if I, if I may yield to Chief Andrew on this issue, this is, this comes up to you every year. However, I think that it does require a brief explanation. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Commissioners, this is something that comes around every year. In order for the Dade County State Attorney's Office to prosecute our ordinance violations and certain misdemeanors, we, or they require an inter-local agreement... and certain misdemeanors, we, or they require an interlocal agreement to be signed, and it comes up every year, and my recommendation is to approve it so that we can get the prosecutions, prosecutions that we need done.
Thank you.
Motion?
Second.
Yes, Commissioner Suarez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanes?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mayor Blanca?
Yes.
Four zero, item passes. Item 12, good of the order?
Good of the order?
I have something, Madam Mayor, I'll be brief. And this is in regards to the, to the mitigation issues that come up here to this commission constantly. You know, I, I think about what our mayor said one day as he sat there, he said that when he sits there, he, he bases every single decision that he makes on how he can improve the quality of life of each and single resident of the city of West Miami, and, and his decisions are based on just that, and, you know, I emulate that, I, I try to do the same thing. As I sit here, I think about what will be the best thing, what will be the best decision, you know, that can improve the quality of life and, and bring safety, sanitation, cleanliness, all the good things that we enjoy in our city. And whenever we have these mitigation from court enforcement fines, we, we, we take under consideration, and, and again, as the city manager said, they all have to be looked at differently, because they're all...
Different.
Different, and like in, in this one, you know, probably the neighbors didn't realize what was going on, you know, unless, just for the unsightly lack of grass in that certain area, but, but there, there are others, you know, that do inflict, you know, the quality of life to, to our residents, and, you know, there's a reason why we have these rules, these laws, these regulations, why we have a court enforcement officer, a court enforcement department, and why we, you know, levy the penalty against a property when they break the code, and that is that, you know, they will be penalized, and, you know, they better not do it again. That's basically what happens when you speed, you get stopped by a policeman, you get a ticket, and you slow down. So anyways, what I'm alluding to is that if there are cases, mitigation cases, where, you know, again, and most of these cases are absentee landowners, like Ms. Cabrera, she doesn't live here, she bought a house here and she rents, so it's not her problem, she's not affected by it, and quite frankly, she's very far removed from the, from the problem, so, and, and that's typically what happens, and I think that when that happens, and is a grievous condition where, you know, it was, where there was negligence involved, where a long period of time, you know, took place, you know, we gotta think about the resident, we gotta think about, you know, the, the, the resident living in the general area of this property and, and the effect that, that it had on their quality of life. That's something that we never talk about, and you know what, I think if there's gonna be any type of consideration, I think that that should be considered with the utmost of importance, besides anything else. So, you know, I was thinking a lot about it, you know, so I just wanted to, to, to express how I felt about it. I mean, I'm, I'm all about quality of life, safety, sanitation, cleanliness, you know, our services.
Aesthetics.
You know, we, we, we do enjoy a great quality of life here in this city, and, you know, fortunately, we have a lot of rental units, a lot of single-family residences that are, that are, that are rented, and, you know, it leaves, the property owners take more care of their property than, than the renters, so hopefully, if this happens again, and the circumstances are conducive for us to, to have to take this under consideration, I think that we need to, and, and impose a higher fine, because that is gonna be the only, I'm not referring to this, I'm referring about future occurrences. I think that we should definitely think about, you know, increasing the fine for these types of conditions, so...
Thank you, Commissioner.
I think I've said enough.
Commissioner, you know, there's always been a sore spot of mine.
I know.
Always been a sore spot of mine, so I, I hear you.
I know.
I hear you.
Anything else?
Good night. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.